Board of County Commissioners to order. It is March fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, we're meeting on the two thousand and twenty-one, I'm sorry. We're meeting on the Zoom platform. This is how the meeting's gonna go today. We're gonna hear from all the health experts that have joined us today. And they will be giving their their expert opinions from their medical training. Then the commissioners will, during that process, the commissioners will ask them questions and then be asking them questions when they have concluded. After that, I will I will allow people to talk in regard to any questions they have at the health panel. Or make statements. I'd like you to keep the comments to three minutes or less. At five minutes, I'll ask you to to stop, okay? So let's go ahead and move on. I'm gonna turn over to Lori Forgy.
Lori, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Noll. Okay, so just gonna go over a few kind of where we're at with COVID right now in Atchison County. Our numbers are remaining pretty low the last couple of weeks. We've averaged seven to ten active cases at a time, which, you know, prior few months ago, a couple of months ago, it was, you know, twenty a day. Or more, so we're moving in the right direction. We have. We receive a vaccine on a weekly basis. The Health Department is getting three hundred doses a week, and then also that's first doses. We also get, the state holds back that second dose for us, and it comes just separate, it's not counted. So far, just here at the Health Department, we've given over three thousand doses. Tomorrow, we go to four oh nine School District, and we're gonna do the teachers there and staff. Hundred and fifty is kind of what we're thinking there. And we are in phase two of our immunization state program. We were doing ages sixty-five and over only, and that's been opened up to everyone in phase two.
Hey Lori.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure that you read the announcement that the governor is making currently as we speak. That we're moving into phases three and four, starting March twenty-second.
Okay.
They just emailed that to us at three thirty.
Okay, no, I did not have that information. So March twenty-second, we're doing phases three and four, so everybody?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so that has opened up. I'm a little bit concerned, and I need to check out why we opened up six hundred appointments on Friday for next week, Thursday and Friday, and so far, we only have two hundred and sixty people signed up for those. So I just need to see kind of.
We are at three hundred and thirty-seven currently, Lori.
Okay, okay. I just know that before they were going like within a couple of hours, and so I just wanted to make sure that everything was going okay with that. Anything else that you want from me as far as what's happening right now with COVID?
Could you say what your, could you give the details of the health order, Lori?
Sure, so. So we got together on Friday and discussed the health order, and it had been about three weeks since we did the the last one. So we are wanting to do, we've gotten rid of most everything on the order. I think that it was maybe not explained very well. Or was hard to kind of figure out what exactly we were talking about with everything that was listed. And so right now, we just have a mass gathering of forty. But mass gatherings are instances where individuals in one location can't maintain a six-foot distance. So that doesn't mean a building can only have forty people in it, it's forty individuals per one thousand square feet. And that is basically the only thing in the order, maintain the six-foot distance between customers or groups of customers. Masks, coverings, and the nose and mouth are required, unless, of course, they're sitting at a table trying to eat. Businesses should follow the fundamental cleaning and public health practices detailed on covid, covidks dot go. And then, again, like I said before, just avoid any instances in which a group of more than forty is in one space at one time.
Lori, I'm sorry to interrupt, but basically, essentially, you're saying everybody can be opened up to their occupancy requirements by the fire department?
Yeah, it's, I think, yes, absolutely, as far as I know, that that is, that does open up everyone according to fire regulations.
You know, I know, I know we're saying forty thousand square feet, but in reality, it's basically opening everybody up to their capacity, correct? As long as they social distance, and, okay, okay, thank you.
And then, and then we were gonna look at this again in probably a month. And if numbers stay the way they are right now, like I said, we have right now, today, three active cases, and we have one in the hospital. So long as our numbers, you know, maintain for the next month, I say that we think that we should move it up to maybe double it. And then, in a month, check it again, see where we're at, and then go from there.
So we are moving into three and four, Lori?
I'm sorry?
Are we moving into phases three and four?
For vaccination?
No, no, I'm sorry, for the health order.
Okay, yes.
So what does three and four mean, Lori?
Not sure that I put phase four on there, that's not on.
Jack, if I can, we had been labeling the previous health orders as phase three point five because we really hadn't changed any of the restriction things, it was just the mass gathering that we really had been changing, because we took off that detailed section that had, for different businesses, what they could do and what they couldn't. We decided to go ahead and change this to phase four, because it's a change in some of those restrictions that we had in there. But the mass gathering, we left the same. And I do think that we didn't change that mass gathering this time around from what we did a few weeks ago. So really, everyone should have been opened up to their fire capacity prior, because the previous order said forty-four thousand square feet and all those business restrictions. So that's technically staying the same, it's just the details of those restrictions we removed to keep everyone on an even plank.
So I want to make sure I understand. If I run out of restaurant in Atchison, I can open up to the capacity allowed by the fire department? As long as people are socially distanced? Is that correct?
And my point was, that should have been where they, where restaurants were able to be already, because we didn't change that number. I think there had been some misinterpretation of that wording that we had, and so we did try to clarify that a little better since we became aware of that confusion.
That's why I was trying to clarify, because actually forty people per thousand square feet. I did a calculation, and the commissioners, I looked at it last week, and basically, most restaurants could have more people, the forty per square foot of the fire department allowed, so just want to make.
Please, please don't go over fire code, like, I can't, I can't change that rule. But also, this is for like outside events, so that we're not having huge groups of people in one area all at once as well, so, but yeah, I mean, restaurants should have been open to full capacity a while ago.
What about ballgames, sports, softball? That type of thing?
So I can speak for K through twelve. We meet with them, we haven't in a couple of weeks, but they, I know that Keisha has is allowing four people per student. We have decided to keep it at two per student, just so that we can maintain that social distance inside the gym. That was not a decision that I made, it's a decision that every every administrator, K through twelve in this county made. So that's where we're at with that. At ballgames, I would say it's mass gathering of forty or more, so if you can maintain that six-foot distance between, you know, groups of people, then, I mean, it's fine.
Okay, I was mainly talking, not necessarily school-sponsored, but summer league type ballgames.
Yeah, Mr. Noll, I believe that as long as they can say socially distanced, that you should be okay with your spectators at your ballgames for summer leagues.
Okay, so Lori, the next big question, and I think it's on everybody's mind, is what about mask wearing? The governor's mandate lasts until March thirty-first. We don't know if she's gonna extend it. I'd like to hear from all the health professionals what their thoughts are on masks.
Well, I guess I can start. So CDC and KDHE say that public health measures apply to everyone, including those who are vaccinated. So that means a mask, avoiding crowds, hand washing, avoided poorly ventilated spaces, and maintain that six-foot distance. Until we get eighty percent of the population vaccinated, we're not, we don't have herd immunity. So CDC, KDHE are still recommending masks, and I still recommend a mask just for common sense reasons. It's not a hundred percent effective, but it's a whole lot better than having nothing.
Dr. Taga, what's your thought on masks?
I mean, you're gonna feel like I'm echoing Lori, but at this time, in the same spot, I'm really glad our numbers have been doing so well. I think it's a testament to how people have been doing a better job with masks and social distancing, as well as maybe starting to see how some of that vaccination that we've been able to get out there has been helping. But I'm not comfortable saying that we should stop doing masks until our larger governing bodies, such as the CDC and KDHE say that we should, we are okay to stop. I think we'll look for higher guidance on that at this point, and my anticipation is that I think the governor will renew her mask mandate. Obviously, I don't have any insider information on that. I think she will. And so, yeah, I would support. If I were asked, should she renew, I would say yes, until we are through at least our five phases of vaccination. I think we should continue doing it.
So if I'm hearing correctly, you're saying that even if the government removes the mask mandate, you would recommend that we have a mask mandate in Atchison County?
Yeah, I would, because like Lori pointed out, we're far from herd immunity, and right now, we're fairly used to doing the masks. If we get, numbers go in the other direction, I think it's gonna be a lot harder to to reinstitute anything, I may even say nearly impossible to go back and put something back on. So I think at a minimum, we should be through our five phases of vaccination, or at least in the fifth phase, before they consider removing something like that that has been in place currently.
I've got a question on that. To what end? At the end of the vaccination period, it's gonna have to start all over again. The vaccinations are, have a ninety-day window. We're gonna be ready to line up again and start this all over, aren't we? And then are we gonna need to keep the vax, the masks on for another full round of vaccinations?
So.
Oh, sorry, Lori, we were probably gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, no, I was sure that I had brought this up before, but the quarantine, they extended that to six months. So after you have had the second vaccine, you are good for six months. They're still learning about the vaccines, and so that could even be extended longer. In the beginning, it was ninety days, now it's six months, that you should be good. I would like to point out also, our K through twelve schools had to close in the beginning because of, well, the Board of Education decided to close them. This was right after I got this position, and I remember being in the commission's office fighting to keep the schools open, and we did that, and the next day, the Board of Education shut them down. With masks and with all of these protocols that we have in place, K through twelve has been able to stay open. And there are a lot of places and a lot of counties that can't say the same. And so I think that's also a testament as to another reason why we need to keep, keep it on instead of backing off.
But back to my point, okay, so it's six months. The first vaccinations took place in December, I believe. They'll be ready in six months, about the time that the first go-around of vaccinations will be done. We're gonna have to start all over again in, say, July anyhow.
I don't, I don't know, Eric, because I don't.
At six months, if that, I'm taking your figure, at six months, the first vaccinations that took place anywhere that I know of happened in December. So you do the math, and people will be at the end of their their, the usefulness of the vaccine that they received, so won't we be starting to need to vaccinate again? I mean, don't that?
I mean, you know, it's like I said, they're still, they're still studying that, and it's just like, we thought it was ninety days, and now it's six months. I mean, in two or three weeks, another month, they may say it's a year. And that's the unfortunate thing.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's where my fear comes in, that we're gonna get close to that point, and then say, oh, well, we don't really know, so we're gonna have to keep the masks on yet again, because we don't have the information. There's no way to know that far into the future what's coming, and it seems like we just keep putting this out as can't think of the word, warrior, you're just imposing it, because we don't know, we can't be too safe, but that's the way it seems to the public anyway.
Well, that's unfortunate. I'm not sure a better way to explain why masks are important and necessary. CDC.
People can, wanna use a mask and use them at any time without a mandate, correct?
That's true. However, your mask protects me, and my mask protects you.
Okay, so do we have somebody on from the hospital here? There's so many people on here, it's hard for me to find out.
Yes, this is Alicia Sorenson, Chief.
What are your thoughts?
And at this point, you know, our thoughts are that while we do see that COVID nineteen is a very serious virus, our team has been able to meet the healthcare needs of our community without being overwhelmed. We do continue to see lower numbers of acute illness compared to prior years, and generally, even in times of not being in a pandemic. We have great people, and we've been able to meet the challenges that we have faced. And are, throughout this entire process, we have been able to care for the community, and we will continue to do so under whatever guidelines the county officials put in place. And we will continue to support whatever guidelines are put into place by KDHE.
Okay. Christina, do you have anything else you want to add, or?
And I would just say that things are changing every day. And we find things out literally half an hour before they go live. So like the governor announcement today at four, we got a hon alert at three thirty. So, you know, when we're giving you information, we're giving it as soon as we're getting it, and sometimes we're not getting it until right before it's happening. So like Lori said, yes, they changed it from ninety days to six months. It could be tomorrow that they say, okay, we're just gonna do a COVID shot yearly, and it'll, you know, it'll be just like a flu shot, or, you know, back when they did H one N one. And I did a little research, because I was kind of curious, you know, H one N one was a big deal, what happened? You know, everybody got those shots, we had pods, and then we don't hear anything about it anymore. You know, I was quite a bit younger then, in my twenties, I don't remember hearing anything about it since then. But they combined that in with our flu shots, so that's why people aren't being vaccinated for H one N one anymore. So we don't really know what's to come, COVID could kind of be the same thing. But just keep in mind that Lori and Bonnie and everybody involved is keeping you updated as best as they can. As soon as we get the information, and I would agree with Bonnie, that if we do take away masks, you're gonna have to accept that it's gonna be very hard to put something like that into play again. Your community members are gonna be very resistant to that.
I had a question for you. Point out to support what Lori had mentioned at the beginning, when we first started opening up the appointments, we have six hundred vaccine available, we open up the appointments for four hundred and fifty appointments to be scheduled. We hold a hundred and fifty in reserve initially to be able to help those in our community that don't have computer access, don't have the IT knowledge to be able to schedule their own appointments, so that we can assist them personally. When we first started doing that, those, you know, four hundred and fifty appointments would be filling up within forty-five minutes to an hour. And our online, you know, our voicemail would start blowing up with people leaving requests for assistance. We opened up those four hundred and fifty appointments on Friday, and here we are at almost close of day on Monday, and we only have three hundred and thirty-seven appointments. I know that Wes can probably speak a little bit better to the number of cancellations we had at our first clinic this last time, because people have been able to get their vaccines in other counties or through the pharmacies in the area. We were just not seeing right now, I mean, granted, we are about to open up, as you were mentioning, to phase three and phase four, which will increase that demand. But we're just not seeing that big push for the vaccine that we were initially. And as it becomes more readily available, that's obviously going to continue to decline.
Commissioner Quinn, you had some questions or comments?
Well, I was just curious from Christina's point of view, as the Northeast Kansas multi-county health department, what are the current health orders in place for Brown and Jackson right now?
So Jackson County does not currently have a mask mandate, they actually rescinded the governor's order, and they have no limits on their businesses or mass gathering at this time. And Brown County is a little bit different. As a county, we do not have any restrictions. I live in Brown County, so I can speak to the county, but I also know that the cities have their own. So in Hiawatha, we do have a mask mandate, so it's kind of a split. As the county as a whole, there's no mandate, there are no restrictions on gatherings. And but for the city, there are some restrictions, and the mask mandate still applies.
Okay, thank you. And Alicia, with facilities in Donovan and Leavenworth, what are you seeing there as far as health orders?
And we can, our facilities continue to follow Amber Wells' lead, and so we are not operating in either of those facilities under those specific counties. I honestly can't tell you what either of those counties have done, but our employees and our clinics follow Amber Wells' guidelines, which we follow KDHE and Atchison County.
Donovan County has dropped their health orders and mask mandate, as I had written.
What county was that, I'm sorry?
I didn't hear that question.
What county was that, Eric? I didn't hear you. Thank you.
They just dropped it last week, so it's either has already dropped, or they voted to drop, so it's just right on the border.
Yeah, I think for Jackson and Brown Counties and probably Donovan, it's not that they didn't feel like there needed to be an order. The commissioners chose to not adopt the order. And then, so I think that's what happened there. It wasn't that the health professionals thought that, you know, it wasn't necessary, but the commissioners did.
I would echo that for Lori, having been on the Zooms with both that the health officer, Robin Downard, in Brown County, as well as the CEO of Hiawatha Hospital, did recommend that we continue the mask orders. And Angela, right, the health officer for Jackson County also wanted to at least, at the very least, keep the mask order. So as we all well know, your health officer can make a recommendation, but it is ultimately up to you, the county commissioners.
Okay, and then the six hundred appointments with three hundred and thirty-seven currently, so the two sixty-three leftover, is that for this week?
And that is for clinics that we are holding next week on the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth. I do have, where the last time we opened this up, as soon as the online appointments filled, we had about two hundred and eighty-nine voicemails of people to call to assist with scheduling. And just looking, I only have, I have just over a hundred voicemails that I need to respond to. So right now, we, we don't have the demand to meet the supply that we currently have available for the clinics being held on the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth. We anticipate that we'll have those appointments filled by that time. We're just not seeing them go at the speed that they have been previously.
Okay, will you be got, will you be doing an onsite vaccination clinic for USD three seventy-seven as well?
Yes. Okay, we don't have that set up yet, but yes, I think they're on spring break this week. But yeah, I'm gonna do it for all K through twelve schools.
I hear that Walmart is now participating in the vaccinations. I don't know about CVS. Do you, or do you get the information on how many doses they are getting?
No, so Walmart is part of a federal, a federal supply chain. We don't have anything to do with that. We don't know how many they're given. They do have to follow KDHE guidelines as far as who they're giving them to, or they're supposed to. But as far as how many they're getting and how often, we don't have that information.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a way to access that, because we know how many doses are coming in through our organizations. But, you know, when it starts coming through this private, that there could be vax, or people may be signing up for the vaccine through different venues, and now are not, you know, it's taken away the demand here, so, which is a good problem to have, don't get me wrong. I just wondered if there was a way to access and know that, and I think I'd also talk with Wes about, or maybe that was you, Lori, about, it was too bad there isn't some way of. it was too bad there isn't some way of cross-checking that. We would know everybody in the county that had got it. So we could see how many people congregate had had the vaccine, whether it was through the multi-county health or, or shot of hope or through Walmart.
So I think eventually there'll be a way to see how many people in Atchison County have been vaccinated. Unfortunately, Walmart, it does not put theirs in automatically to Web I Z. They have a, some kind of zip file. It's something that I don't understand. But their information goes to the vaccination count differently than say when we give one. When we give one, it automatically goes into Web I Z and it's, it's in there and we can pull numbers from that. Also, I know that the state has talked about or asked about sending vaccines to hospitals and federally qualified healthcare centers. And asked what the health department thought of that. And I thought that that was a great idea. I think the more readily available the vaccine is, the better off we're going to be and the quicker we'll be out of this. So I'm not sure, they haven't said when or if or how many. But it sounds like they're going to start distributing them pretty regularly to everyone.
Um, first, I was just going to say thank you for sending this last Friday because it gave us a few days to kind of absorb it and talk to, talk to various businesses around Atchison County. One of the things that I was wondering that if you would consider is both Blishmize and MGP were considered like essential. And so they were wondering if that would be something that you could do type of an onsite vaccine, vaccination clinic for them for like hundreds of, I mean, because their employee, they employ hundreds of people in Atchison County and just, sometimes people can't take off on the Tuesday, Thursday. And I just thought Blishmize's best case scenario, if everybody opted in was a hundred and MGP was two hundred. So that would be a nice round to administer there onsite if you have hundred extras or you could plan for maybe those two, just to get as many as, as possible.
Absolutely, that's something I can definitely look into. I can even like send the consent forms ahead of time so they can have them all filled out and we can just run them through. So yeah, I, I wrote those down. As soon as we have vaccine, I can just hold out three hundred doses or however many we think we need. And, and we'll go onsite for those as well.
That would be fantastic. And I feel bad because I said three seventy-seven, but I guess also about Trinity, St. Benedict's and Morehill Mount Academy in Benedictine, will you be guys doing onsite for them as well or?
Um, I probably will not go to B C. But for Trinity, all of the K through twelve schools I'll be going to for sure onsite. And I will see what happens with B C. I, I need to get a head count probably. And then it's tough, the campus is spread out. But just, you know, we get everybody to come to one place and in a certain amount of time, we can, we can look into that as well. But K through twelve will all be onsite.
Okay.
And Benedictine actually is, most of them are coming from the clinic. So a lot.
Any other questions from commissioners? Have we talked to all the health people out here today? So want to leave everybody out, okay?
So I have a couple more questions.
Casey.
Um, so the doses, the six hundred, that's allocated to Atchison County, correct? Yes, okay. Um, because I was curious, because I got online on Friday and signed up my grandma to bring her in. And I noticed on there that we were accepting residents at the Sophia Center for Leavenworth and Jefferson and like surrounding counties. And I was just curious, those are Atchison County doses, but we're giving those to surrounding counties, is that correct?
That is correct. That is what we have been instructed to do, not to turn anyone away. Um, we don't ask for ID. Um, we just vaccinate if they make it through the survey, then we vaccinate them. Um, so yes, that is, that is true. But we also have a lot of our county people who are going to other counties and getting vaccinated as well. So I know tons of people have gone to Nehawhaug County. And so, yeah, that, that is happening.
And when you say you've been instructed, who instructs us to do that? Because when I read other counties, it's like they're taking care of their own and county within, you know, Atchison. And if we keep our businesses closed down because we don't have the eighty percent herd immunity, we're not vaccinating our own. So I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding that.
So KDHE, that, that came from them. And I think all counties are actually doing, what counties are you speaking of that don't vaccinate?
Well, I was just so, no, I was reading on like the Facebook pages. I think Brown was like all in county and, um, I don't know, I had a bunch of, I read all weekend, different things, just trying to be prepared for this meeting. So I was just kind of curious because I didn't notice that, but I hadn't signed up for a while. And when I signed my grandma up, I noticed that. So I was like, well, that's kind of seems crazy when we get limited doses in Atchison County. We should be giving them to Atchison County residents.
Yep.
And then one of the challenges and the, the letter that was actually sent to KDHE by the K H A was speaking directly to organizations such as Amberwell Health. I mean, when you're looking at serving our patient population, we serve a five county surrounding area, including Buchanan County over on the Missouri side. So in order to truly take care of our patients and the community that comes in, um, K H A is actively advocating for being able to open up the availability, especially along those state lines. And we are also assisting with the distribution of vaccine in Brown County through our Horton Clinic. So Lori is absolutely right. The direction all along from KDHE was that we would provide it for anybody that fell within that phase qualification, knowing that they could make it to that administration site and return to that administration site for their second dose. I mean, we have people that work in this community and are coming into this community on a daily basis that live in other counties.
Okay, and then has Atchison County got any Johnson and Johnson vaccine yet?
I do, I have a hundred doses. Yeah, we had a hundred of those and we're not sure if we're going to get any more or when. But I do have a hundred and that is a one-dose vaccine. And so I'm trying to figure out best use for that. I was thinking maybe county jail, but I need to get with KDHE and C.
Okay. And then just one more thing, after talking to business owners, um, they invited me in with their fire plans and went over them with, with me. And because I was saying the same thing from what I had learned as far as you're at full capacity because of fire code and all of that. Well, when they go over the fire plan with me and we read through the business guidelines that maintain six feet social distance, the distance limits their tables. So they're not at full capacity. They're still wrenched down to where, where they're at basically. So just, just to let you guys know that, that that's what their floor plans and blueprints and show. So I'm just relaying that back of what I'm learning, talking to the business owners. So because all of that has to come in to play for us making decisions, so.
Right.
Of course, if you take a look at it from a customer point of view, Casey, they want to come into places they feel safe in.
And that's everyone's choice.
Yeah, it's a kid, it's a kid.
I will take out, but other people feel safe going in, so it's, it's everyone's choice and.
If I make it safe, then I don't have as many customers. I don't have as much space. If I don't make it safe, I have less customers.
Well, and it's interesting, when you talk to the business owners, like I really do feel like they will do what's right for the community. And we just have to give them that, that they'll do the right thing. Because many of them said, you know, they just want the ability to run a business how they see fit. I mean, so that's just the feedback that, that I feel. And many of them are going to have to have their own plans moving forward. Because I took, uh, we got Young Dragon last night takeout and that poor girl lost all of her staff. So she isn't doing a buffet for thirty people. So she's going to have to hire from the ground up. So just things to keep in mind.
Yep, very good points, Casey. Um, okay, any other commissioner comments? Okay, anybody like to speak from the public? If they just put up the chat bar. Nobody?
Oh, there's a chat, hold on. Do you see that one?
I don't see a chat.
Probably a lot of people are not familiar with the format, so that might be a little.
Here, here, here's one from somebody.
Edward Mulholland.
I, I think this is, Edward, did you want to get on and ask the question or do you want me to read the question?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking because I'm, I, I had two questions. The first one is this, that we, we are measuring herd immunity based on eighty percent of people being vaccinated. We've already said that with Walmart offering it and other, and others, that we might not even know how many people have got the vaccination. So it's not going to be easy to determine that. But my also question is, it's also a factor also of who's had the virus, is it not? Because most data that I'm seeing suggests that once seven percent of a population is tested positive, and this you can check data state by state and region by region, the numbers all of a sudden start to plummet. And we are close to if we have not met that standard already. So I'm just wondering where we're get, why we are measuring herd immunity just by a vaccination standard and not by some other.
Yeah, so I think I can address, especially your second question. Unfortunately, for those who've had actual COVID infection, we have seen that their antibodies do decrease. And we have seen recurrent cases within our county and our surrounding counties. And so while the vaccine appears to have a longer immunity to it already, because they've already extended that to the six months. And like we said, we anticipate that they'll extend that longer. But we're waiting for that data before they officially do that. We have seen that actual infection does not provide immunity for that long. Therefore, you can't include that in your herd immunity percentage. And as to your other half of your question, I don't entirely know how to answer because like we said, right now, we don't have the data on vaccinations from Walmart or other entities. That, that will be a factor. Right now, we know we're probably not there, right? We, we've probably given the most vaccine and we've given three thousand. Last time I checked, our county population was around sixteen thousand. So we're a long ways from eighty percent. If you just use those two numbers. But I, I think that we're going to have to start looking to guidance from our state health department, so KDHE as well as CDC. Hurt immunity is what they're discussing right now. So that's kind of what we're relaying to you. But I think that there's going to be a way that they're saying, hey, we've got enough that we can kind of count this as a decent estimate of herd immunity. It's going to be difficult to tell until all of that data is entered appropriately.
Jack, if I could just ask a few more questions if he's finished also, I, I'm not quite done.
Okay, I had, I had, I had one more that had to do with if the standard is gathering of forty per one thousand square feet in, in an indoor space, how does that affect outdoor space? Like if I were to have a block party and somebody says, well, it has to be forty people. And it says, yeah, but I mean, I'm, I'm dealing with seven thousand square feet. As long as, as long as different groups of people can, can sit somewhat apart, where, uh, how, how would that be able to be calculated?
Well, the order reads.
No, go ahead, Lori, you're fine.
I was just going to say the order reads, um, mass gathering of forty individuals. And so, um, so if you have forty individuals in one space and they're comfortable being in that space with other people and you have six foot space away and you have forty people over there, I believe that's how the order is reading right now.
So the answer to his question is that, if I'm correct about what I'm hearing, is outdoor gatherings are okay as long as there's forty people for a thousand square feet and there's play distance. So if I'm at a horse pasture and there's four hundred people, I'd have to spread out uh, forty thousand per feet.
Yep.
Am I right? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think this is a big problem because I don't think, I think a lot of times people get, I think it's a challenge sometimes for people to realize what they can and can't do. And we're information rich and understanding poor. And that's, it, it's a challenge for the whole, the whole process, so. So yes, so you could go have a, a block, you could have a block party under the, under the current guidelines.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you have a mass gathering of forty and you have six foot spaces between those groups and you think that's a good idea.
That's forty per thousand square feet.
Right.
Correct.
I, I, I have a big block here, so we could probably have a lot of people on it, so. That's good news. Anything else, Casey?
Uh, yes, I had a question if you guys would entertain ever doing a weekend clinic or for anyone that works Monday through Friday that can't attend. The reason I was asking is it was exciting to hear all of the daycares. Well, ACCA and First Steps have both had all of their faculty vaccinated and that's, that's exciting. But there's a daycare in Lancaster and it's ran by one particular lady and she just can't tell her parents, sorry, you can't take it, I'm coming to get a vaccine on Tuesday. So I was wondering if there's any plans for maybe an off day on a weekend where working individuals can come and sign up and get a vaccine.
Yeah, the, the hospital, we've discussed that as a group, having either an evening or a weekend. We just haven't done it yet. And with a limited vaccine, we've just been trying to do our Tuesday, Thursday and getting it into arms. But yeah, we could, we could probably work that out at some point for sure.
Okay, awesome. Um, another question, and I was trying to under, read through and the phases, the word critical workers, and then even if we go to phase four, age sixteen to sixty-four with other medical risks or anyone previous to that. I'm just trying to think of other professions in Atchison where you're always in someone's face. Or so I was thinking of like our hair salons and our stylists or gas station attendants or people like that. Are we able as a county to make exceptions and, and to consider them as, you know, essential when that's their livelihood, working face to face with someone every day? Or to include them in this or how does that work?
So, so no, I cannot make exceptions. I have to go by the outline, what's outlined with the KDHE. But the good news is, we just found out that on March twenty-second, it looks like it's going to be a free for all. So phases three and four are opening up, so, um, so that's good news.
So when you say free for all, because when I read it, if I don't have a medical risk and everyone prior to that, can I still come and sign, I can still get age sixteen to sixty-four with other medical risk or all unvaccinated persons prior in previous phases?
Casey, didn't the governor just open phase three and four today announcement?
It's, it's open jackets opening on the twenty-second, so phase three or four, yeah. Um, so yeah, sixteen to sixty-four with medical conditions that increase their risk on phase four. Is, yeah, so that's just about, well.
Free for all, I mean, I could come and you really don't know if I have a medical risk, I could get a vaccine is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's happened already, so sure.
Okay, I was just trying to understand. And then, um, there's also grants. I, I was reading like the E L C COVID nineteen grants. Are, are we, is our health department applying for any of those? Christina?
Yes, we did. And I did write and submit for grant funding. Our grant funding is bundled for all three counties, so it's one big grant. And I wrote for, and this is not a competitive grant, there is a predetermined. and this is not a competitive grant. There is a predetermined amount we get based on population and the COVID cases that we've had. So I definitely did write for the full amount. And I also wrote for a reserve for the, the next grant year. So how that worked is they gave us a, an amount that we were allowed to write for, but we can also carry some of that funding over into 2023. So we, you know, with very limited time to write this grant, they just came out with it in the last two to three weeks. And all of our other grants were also due. I wrote that with funding put aside also for 2023. So that has all been completed and our board president signed off and I submitted all of that today.
Awesome. And what was that amount that was applied for?
It's just under 500,000 for all three counties, 492,000.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the audience have a question? Okay, let's go ahead and talk about this, uh, this health order commissioners.
Um, there's another question, Jack.
Okay. Is it going to be on the subject of the health order?
Well, he put it in the chat.
Oh, I didn't see that. I, I, I don't see it. Oh, he didn't. Okay. Is this John Raspussen?
Yes.
Okay. John, you wanted, did you have something you wanted to say? He spoke a while ago, Casey. Casey, you think he already spoke? I don't see him on here. Okay, commissioners, what do you, how do we want to move forward?
Uh, I've got a little bit of a question maybe for Pat on process. Are we going to decide and vote today or do we vote tomorrow at a regular meeting?
That's up to us. That's up to us. I could answer for Pat. Up to us. So if you want to wait till tomorrow, we can wait till tomorrow.
I, I just, I didn't know for sure what, if this was informational meeting or if we were going to act today. So. Um.
It is an open and out meeting, Eric. So we can now, we can opt today. Uh, I think I have all of the information I need to make a decision. Uh, if, if anybody else needs more time, let's delay it till tomorrow.
I'm, I, I can make a decision today.
Commissioner Quinn? Okay. So what's, where do we want to move forward?
I would like.
I, 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 okay. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Although first, um, so I would like to rescind the health order. Um, I don't want to put restrictions on mass gatherings because of graduations upcoming. And I don't want any business restrictions. Um, I would like to see the, the mask mandate doesn't really do anything. Anyway, people have been doing what they want to do, but I would like to see the mask mandate stay in effect at least until the end of the school year this year.
Okay. Well, this, this, the, 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 uh, order we have here is till April 13th, Casey.
Right. So that was my feedback on it. So I will not.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is that you want to, uh, we can revisit it on the 13th, but you, you want to keep the mask mandate in place and you want to remove the mass gathering.
Uh, yeah, I would remove everything except the masks. And after talking to the superintendents, I think it's a good idea to keep that in place until the end of the school year. Cause I don't want to be a working mom of three that is homeschooling again this year.
I think when you say everything, we've got to be more specific.
Okay.
Reset the health orders. Correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, what I'm reading.
So you, you just want, you don't want any health orders. You just want to stay with the governor's mask mandate? So we would just get rid of the orders altogether, um, and just have recommendations. Um, or I would recommend it, um, to the public and they can do that whatever. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I would go along with that.
I hate to use the football analogy, but we're the fourth quarter and we're going to win the game. But you don't want to spike the ball on the five yard line. So let's be careful that we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think the businesses should be open. Uh, I think the school wants the mask mandate. So, uh, and I think it's good for the community. And I think somebody said that people follow it or don't follow it anyway. Is that right? I mean, that's, that's what my, that's what my observation has been.
Yeah, there's no enforcement. I mean, every business has it on their door, but my brother-in-law and I can walk in, me with a mask, him without, and it's like, nobody cares.
Okay. So the thing is this health order, what I've been hearing from Dr. Taggett, our Lori Forger, our health nurse, uh, the hospital is that this, this, this health order, this health order is what they re- recommend from a professional point of view. Now, mass gatherings is a different issue. So do you want to do that, the, the order with the, out the mass gatherings?
Yeah, I would like to see people be able to plan for graduations.
Okay.
Um, and as far as that goes, I very much respect the hard work and, and understand the hard work you guys are all putting in. But we have to remember as commissioners, like your job is to solely focus on the numbers and the health and your recommendation is that. And we have to remember as commissioners, we have to take that into consideration. And trust me, I mean, my family has not had playdates with families and friends from other schools. Like we're following all of the guidelines, but at the end of the day, you have to remember we're representing the county and what's good for all of us and, you know, the economic factors and everything else that plays into this. So it's not like I don't want you to take offense and I'm not saying, you know, that we don't think you're doing your job or doing a good job. It's just we as commissioners need to think big picture as far as all the other factors we have to look.
Right. I understand that because my job is, I mean, for a year now, this is all I've done is COVID-19. So that's all I, I know. Numbers, I know deaths, I know, um, you know, KDHE every day. So, so yeah, that is what my focus, um, do I want businesses to fail? No. But my job is to make sure that the county is healthy. Um, and so that's why I write these orders. Um, because it is what, well, I sign them, but we have a group of medical experts that, um, help to draw them up. Um, so no, I'm not offended. Um, I can go to bed at night knowing that I tried to do the right thing, um, and then it was denied.
Yep. I appreciate you.
So of course we can't legislate away the pandemic because if we could, we would. And I guess a year ago, I thought this last two or three weeks, it'd be over. So, yeah, all of us, all of us have been affected. Uh, either economically, personally or both. It just, somewhere we've been affected and it's changed our society probably. Um, and think of, at least we've had our children in school in our county. That's been a real, a real positive. So I'm going to try this and let's see how this works. I would, I would entertain a motion that approves the health order till April 13th, 2021, might accept removal of the mass gathering. Except for the removal of the mass gathering. Do I have a? You're looking, giving me a look. So we'll accept the health orders as, that will remove the mass gathering. Is there something else I'm missing? Commissioner Quinn, just shaking your head.
Yeah, I, I would, I don't know how this works, Lori, if, I mean, I don't want you guys put a bunch of more work into it, but I definitely want to keep the masks in place until the end of the school year. Um, with that being said, like, there's a lot of things, Jack, on this that would be different.
So yeah, Casey, I'm, to be honest with you, um, it was trial by fire for all of us, I think. I'm not sure exactly how it works either. Um, Pat would probably be the one to answer that to.
Well.
Legally.
Could the schools impose the mask mandate on their own, uh, just such as any business can do that themselves, can't they? I mean, if a woman chooses to, uh, have a mask policy for their business, they can impose that, correct?
So the mask, the mask mandate is not in order from me. It's in order from the governor and you guys, um, adopted it.
Yeah. And I've talked to superintendents on both, uh, USD 377 and 409. And I think everyone's on board. We need to keep that until school's out and then hopefully we can start the fall without mask. But right now we need to keep that in place.
There's a question on here and.
Uh, Eric, the questions are over. This is just a, this is.
No, I think we should. Is Commissioner Quinn asking for continuation of masking K through 12? K through 12 school or everywhere?
Okay. I'm running the meeting and we've already had the question and answer period.
I know, but it's an open meeting. I hate to.
I understand, I understand what you're trying to do, Commissioner Quinn. You want to, you want every chance. And I think we've had these chances. So I think we're, we're at the point where we've got to decide. So I'm, I'm proposing that we follow the math, the, the order as presented, less the, uh, less the, uh, mass gathering restriction. And you're shaking your head. So tell me what else you want to do, Casey.
I mean, do you have it in front of you?
I, I do, but I'm having trouble reading it.
Okay. So really if the mask mandates aren't put on by Lori, I would just not accept this.
The only thing that that order does is, or is the mass gathering. So if you're not going to accept the mass gathering, there, there's no purpose of that order. Sorry.
Yeah.
That, that's all it does is.
Only if it would be suggested, as Lori said something about suggestions. So, uh, if, you know, if there's things sanitization and, uh, uh, keeping your hands clean and those type of things, if there's some kind of that as far as actual orders on size of crowds and everything, I think that's a no.
Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion to make all the, all the, all items coming from the health department as a suggestion? Do I have a second?
I, I didn't understand that question, Jack.
Okay. So I'm just saying is we, we won't have a health order. We'll just have suggestions, uh, recommendations from, from the health department. That's the motion.
I, I don't think there's statutory authority for you to do that. You can review individual orders as they come and, uh, amend or revoke them. But I don't see that there's authority to say that, uh, she can't issue another order. Uh, so I, I think that might be a little stronger language than, uh, that, then than is authorized under, under the statute. So, uh, I think you, you'll need to address them on a order by order basis, I think. Uh, so that would just be my suggestion.
So, but if we're not going to have orders anymore, Pat, then can I just do like on our letterhead, um, what we recommend doing as the county health department, um, in order to stay safe? Um, and maybe post it on Facebook and I don't, I mean, it's nothing that you guys would have to adopt. It's just general information. Um.
That sounds, I would, I would share that and continue to tell people your recommendations. Absolutely.
Yes. Wholeheartedly. Yes.
Okay. So I, I, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we rescind the health orders, uh, currently in effect.
One second.
Has moved and seconded? Any further discussion?
Yeah. I, I would suggest you make that a little, um, a little more specific. That is that you're rescinding emergency order of local health officer 2021 dash 16 and 15. Um,
Okay. Include the wording, um, emergency order of local health officer 20, 2021 dash 16 and 15.
Yeah. Fif- 15 would still be in effect, uh, but for this, is that right? I don't have a copy of it in front of me.
I just have 16.
When did 15 expire? Or does 15 expire?
May.
So you would, you would want to list both of them, I believe.
Okay. 2015 and 2016.
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Uh, okay. It passes two to one. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at 5:05 PM.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Noll. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.